Like to make a request for motion to approve the agenda. And a second. Any discussion needed? Okay, then they're approved. Oh, you, okay, all those in favor? Any opposition? Okay. Then to approve. We'll move on to the agenda item, which is the appointments. Go ahead and open for nomination for chairman of the town Tyron planning commission for the year 2025.
Motion to approve that with never gone for another year.
All those in favor?
Those who there. Good morning, nominations.
Motion to close nomination. Second, thank you. All those in favor? Opposition? David number all will be chairman for 2025. We'll go ahead and open for nomination for vice chairman.
All for nomination for for the vice chair. Thank you.
Your breath. Second. Nomination or sorry. Close it, any other, any other, yeah, any other nominations? Motion to close. Okay, all those in favor? Opposition? All right, vice chairman has decided for 2025. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Go ahead and ask for a motion to approve those minutes. Second. Any further discussion needed? All those in favor? Okay, minutes from the last meeting are approved. We will go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is public hearing. Consideration of a text amendment from applicant Brendan Bowen to section 113 dash 155, exceptions to development standards. We're heading, I spell it to run on that.
Gentlemen, your personally item for your tonight is public hearing regarding text amendment application. Exceptions to development standards section of the ordinance, that's section 113 to 155. Just a little background and history on this item. Mister Brandon Bowen, representing Georgia Basin Resupply and Old Castle APG South Incorporated, Shamrock Industrial Park. It's a bit a text amendment application to the town in late October of 24. The application seeks to amend the town's height restrictions for industrial uses citing perceived efficiency in current ordinance. Specifically, the amendment would accommodate for their application, they can explain 130 foot tall accessory silo structure at the applicant's facility, which manufactures skate greeting harmonics, bagging product. But currently not allowed under the county restriction. Staff's findings, so I did do some, some research, kind of worked with the applicant, Mr. Bowen. On some, some language based on their initial proposed language and tried to revise some of that. So just some of staff's findings in this matter regarding the ordinance review. Upon receiving the application, staff reviewed the town's ordinance and existing industrial condition. Section 113 dash 155 is specifically related to exceptions to development standards with, under that height restriction exception. It does not allow for industrial use to exceed 35 feet unless that use is a soundstage, which we already have a table for them. So the purpose of the height limitation, just as a little bit of explanation, the height restriction aims to maintain a lower development density, preserving the town's aesthetic and ensuring new standards do not clash with the development plan or character for new buildings. That being said, it does intend to grant height grant height exceptions only if they do not compromise the ordinance spirit. Appropriate conditions are currently required to uphold these principles for agricultural height exceptions or other height exceptions, and that can be our ordinance, so you can kind of see where I have it redlined. This section here, which we kind of reorganized some things regarding this application. But bulkheads, parapet walls, belfries, cupola's domes, monuments, chimneys, flagels. These were things that had exceptions already kind of built in. As well as agricultural uses for farms and silos and things like that. So it does have, you know, an exception. That being said, there were not a whole lot of extra conditions on these exceptions, so staff did note a little bit of a deficiency in the way that ordinance is currently crafted from an exceptions to height restrictions perspective. Because a lot of these were not necessarily trying to reduce the impact of the higher but the higher intensity structure of the power structure. It did limit some of these things to not covering more than 25% of the building, but was not clear that, you know, some of these things would would actually reduce the impact. That being said, there are those exceptions. And any exceptions going forward should come with conditions that match to the townwide considerations or intent to be not necessarily for specific applications and purposes before the applicant, before you, as a specific intent. It's staff's kind of role to incorporate that and try and interpret that for a townwide perspective for a whole potential construction types that would occur in different parts of town, so that's how the staff kind of approached that. There are existing structures such as cell towers that exceed this height limit, including industrial silos that are in the industrial park quarries on both ends of town. These were likely exceptions that were built before the current ordinance took effect and are considered non-conforming. The proposed ordinance change would shift these existing non-conforming structures to a conforming status is preferable. It also is intended to greatly limit the impact of taller industrial structures within the quality grid overlay and near residential property. So the revised language, again, originally from this, from the applicant's permission did not fully align with these goals. But staff did collaborate with that to ensure it better meets the town's ordinance and goals and integrates more seamlessly with other sections of the ordinance with consideration for all areas of the town and a variety possible. And going a little bit deeper into that, that specific requirement, so we do list accessory industrial uses located in the M1, M2, and BTP, that are all part of the industrial. And includes, but is not limited to, silos, water towers, windmills, chimneys, smokestacks, mass aerials, elevators and conveyors, provided that such structures do not exceed a total of 150 feet height would be subject to the following setback from the nearest residential or agricultural property line. At the time of the link permit application, we submit to the town, the structure probably setback at least 15 feet for every foot of height over 35 feet. The same applies, that same setback applies from the nearest right of way line of Highway 74. Purpose for that being to preserve the quality of the overlay. So again, it's for every foot of height over 35 feet because by right the properties can build up to 35 feet, that's that standard height restriction for M1 and 2. So every foot of height above that, they need to make sure that they're at least 15 feet further away from a residential property or agricultural property or a right of way line. That just ensures that it's not impacting adversely those property from a, from a visual aesthetic perspective. So staff, with those, with those conditions and the fat language, staff does recommend approval. Do the exceptions to development standards. I know that was a lot, sorry, can explain anything, I can go into detail, and the applicant does have some ideas for things. They can explain regarding which specific.
So Philip, I'm sorry, before, I'd like to hear from Mr. Bowen, but before we do that, I want to understand that the setback that you talked about, that does not necessarily apply as it looks here, it's like to sound stages only.
Right, yeah, our current, our current ordinance for exceptions to development standards. This section here, which is proposed to section four was subsection three. Soundstages as a very specific use are allowed a height limit exception per that table. So they have, they have, they have, they would adhere to a different height allowance or exception to height standard than these uses that we were discussing.
So 130 foot structure here, that would not necessarily be required in terms of setbacks as it is for soundstages.
That's correct, yeah, this would be a separate condition for that particularly, for basically industrial silos. It would not have, it would not comply with this requirement, it would, it would have to comply with the I could say this requirement, this table requirement for soundstage, it would have to comply with this requirement of the
Okay, okay.
One foot for, or 15 feet for every one foot over.
So the red is this, okay, that's the piece that, okay.
And because we added this use, there were a couple of uses in here, so the silos and water towers, chimneys and smokestacks. These were previously up here in, we didn't actually have, we had an agricultural section that, that named non-agricultural uses. And we had a general kind of section that included some of these smokestacks, so we wanted to, we, we noted that smokestacks and different things like that are more industrial uses, so they did get shifted down here in that language that used to mention them up here as general kind of architectural elements that were granted exception. They were removed from there and placed here because we felt that industrial uses were a higher impact, generally speaking, so they require a higher condition.
Before we move to the public hearing, I'll ask if the applicant Brendan Bowen Yeah.
Good evening, I'm actually Robert Walker, I'm, I'm here for Mr. Bowen. Mr. Bowen and I are law partners, and unfortunately had conflict, and so I'm here today this evening to cover it for him and present this matter, and happy to be here. Going to give you a very brief overview. I have these gentlemen behind me who are with Old Castle Northern Masonry Supply, who can answer technical questions. Also, we have an engineer here who has prepared some information and can show you some various aerials and renderings that will help you visualize what this project will look like, also give you a picture of kind of what how it will be laid out in, in connection with the location and proximity to nearby property, residential property, other Again, we, we did apply for this text amendment. However, the, the applicant, the, the true operator here is Old Castle APG South. They operate at George Masonry Supply. They currently operate a, a plant that manufactures concrete blocks in the Shamrock Industrial Park here. Have for quite some time now, and they have an additional seven acre parcel that is sort of underutilized at this time that they would like to utilize and to manufacture dry mix bags, essentially like product. And that process requires the construction of a, of the silo tower structure that we're talking about. And as Philip mentioned, the current ordinance only allows a structure of 35 feet, so we contacted the city and and discussing potential pollution and through, you know, those discussions and ongoing collaboration came up with this notion of a text amendment, and that has been we've, we've made a number of changes to that, the city has made a number of changes. We've gotten that to the current version that you see that we asked a lot, we were approval of. And so I, I, again, I've got VP of Sales here for Old Castle Northern Masonry Supply, I'm going to turn it over to him. If at any point you have any questions with me or, or any of these gentlemen, please stop us. Question during the presentation or and to answer those, we've got a powerful here that we go through. Thank you for your consideration. Any questions you have, let's not.
My name is Kevin Torock, I'm the vice president of sales for Georgia Masonry Supply. Been with the company for a little over 22 years. Got my start selling products that actually came out of that plant, just right around the corner from here, so happy to be down here and brings back a lot of memories. Just a little snapshot of, of our company and our parent company. Our parent company CRH was founded in Ireland in 1970. We really are a family, a families at Old Castle. You understand a little bit about what I'm talking about as I go through this pre-presentation, but a little backdrop of Old Castle APG. The company actually has over 8,500 employees throughout our network of facilities across North America with over 200 locations. As, as a CRH company, Old Castle APG is actually the largest producer of architectural building products on the continent. The company itself was actually a, a family business and the initial owner, his son actually is our current president of our company. So GMS has been operating in this Tyrone location for several years. GMS was founded in 1990 by J.C. Rasch and began a British stewardship ship in Lawrenceville. And the Tyrone site, which we currently have our facility at, was purchased by the Rasch family in 1995. It started out as a single block plant, and over the years we added a secondary plant and then, and then a third block plant. And that's kind of when I came along. So again, it's since expanded to three different block plans out there. In 2003, GMS was acquired by Old Castle APG. J.C.'s son, Jason Rasch, took over the business as company president, and he's still in that role to this day. So GMS has actually expanded to include a collection of 13 block and paper companies and bagging facilities across Georgia, Alabama, Tennessee. And recently, as a few weeks ago, we actually are now in, also in the Jackson, Mississippi. So we continue to grow as, as, while we're owned by a parent company, it really is a family of businesses and several people that, that work at the plant in our offices have been with the company for several years. Let me go to the next one. Control it, sorry. Just say, just kind of, just give it a little bit of overview of what we kind of plan on doing is that Old Castle plants to utilize the seven acre parcel on the north side of the property, construct a dry mix of bagging facility. The existing warehouse on site will be utilized as a production building. Additional accessory equipment will be added outside the building, including a bucket elevator. And most of the raw materials that we're going to purchase will be from the surrounding area, so Martin Marietta National Cement, which are actually in this area where we'll get a lot of our raw materials, which will minimize additional truck traffic outside the industrial park inbound route, so and one reason why we built the plant is that a lot of our raw materials come from locations that are right near our plant. This is just kind of a snapshot of what that facility could look like after adding the, the, the tower there. I'm just, and that, that's where the current warehouse is, and currently that, that warehouse is being used for a storage facility for several different things that we sell, including mortar and accessories and even some sampling, so. So we utilize the facility currently for several other things, but we would feel like we can optimize that facility to add more capacity and, and more business in this area, so. What, what the benefits of this expansion project would look like is that the expansion is expected to add eight to 10 jobs in year one with an additional eight to 10 jobs by year three for a total of 16 to 20 new jobs created. The average salary is estimated to be $70,000, and this includes overtime, as most employees will be hourly. This also would be an estimated projected cost of around $17.4 million. That Old Castle actually estimates, A. county, and that estimated additional $80,000 to $100,000 annually in personal property taxes. There will also be some small increases in sales taxes revenue generated locally. The majority of the new sales, about 75%, it would be sold across the Georgia market, with the remaining sales being trickling into the Alabama and Tennessee market. I just wanted to give you kind of a brief overview of kind of what that, you know, box would look like and what that is.
Can you go back to that picture of that silo?
Sure can.
That's what I
Is it going to be the box that you deal for, the solid side?
It's, it's the silo, the, it's, it's actually, I'm sorry, yeah.
You say that what you have in this picture is about 130 feet tall, or is it's a different?
Yeah, I, I, our VP of Operations is here, I think he, in the presentation, I think he estimated at, I think he said 146, but we're just trying to verify if it was 130, 46. I think he had listed that 146, this, this, yes, correct.
Is that with the structure on top of the actual looks like the additional kind of cage or?
Yeah, I think there's
Structure that, that
Yeah, I think it's like a dark rail.
Top of that is 146?
Yeah, I'd have to go back, but, yeah, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
You're in sales, as I understand. So I'll hold my question for, because I'm, I'm, I'm interested in the environmental impact.
Sure.
And the traffic, things like that, that would be of concern, particularly environmental, you know, studies, what has been determined the impact it would be on the area.
Sure. And, and again, I would say that, that I don't anticipate any you know, additional, I think I'm speaking to, you know, for some of the production guys, but I don't anticipate additional, like dust being created from what's already there. And there may be more outbound trucks because obviously we're making some additional product there. But again, if there's any other questions beyond that, we can definitely put them to you.
I'll just, I'll just take a note that, you know, the application before this something I tried to, something I tried to point out in the staff report, but staff tried to look at this less from a specific application here, of course. Old Castle is, you know, has requests, but staff's consideration was for, you know, townwide exception to the height standard for industrial accessory uses as a, as a general matter. And of course, when we get into, if, you know, they, they, if this app, if the text amendment goes forward, if it's approved by council and they pursue, you know, an application for construction, we would, we would at that point start to get into reviews for improvement. Not because at that point, we would have a specific application for
We should focus on the text amendment, so.
I, that would be my recommendation. That's, that's how staff
Well, that, that helps because if we're focusing on that, then the next step, progressive step would be to council.
Yes, sir.
And at that point, these environmental issues will probably come up then.
Yeah, so it, well, if we're talking about environmental impacts associated with the height of structures generally.
Generally, okay.
Then, then that would, I think that would be something that we could discuss. In the circumstance of this particular development, it would come as a separate application back, back actually to this body.
I guess, so that, that helps because I need to separate out my, my concerns about just the text amendment versus the impact of what this silo will do.
Yes, that, that, that's
I got ahead of myself.
I do have it separate, yeah. Good evening, my name is Mike, living in our BCA Studios Architects. I'm actually not an engineer, I'm an architect. I was just asked to help them out for some visuals, just to understand what you would approve, approve in the future of this project, just to give you an idea, so. So I've got a couple of sheets, the first plane you see right there in the blue box, that is the existing site. All the arrows are converged, that is the location of where this bucket tower will be at. So I've just showed a few dimensions, going up the page, there's a residential area that's 3,500 square feet away. And then I just noted the ground elevation, that's at 910 to 950. That, that, the street you see right there, those houses on actually has a, just getting a feel from the tower itself is that elevation 919. It's already pointed a height, just trying to show there. And then down at the bottom of the page where it says residential distance 2,000 feet, pointing up to that line from the bucket tower down to the other closest residential areas, the closest house to this location is 2,000 milli feet away from the ground. And then this also marks three different views, so I'm going to advance to the next page, which is view one. I hop back real quick, I don't have a pointer, you've seen where view one is, where, where the, where the tag is, that's basically where I'm taking this shot, and I'm using Google Earth. So I modeled the tower on the site, with Google Earth, you actually get the elevation chain from point in points. You're taking a view in street view in Google Earth, and it will show the tower for the, I can export my model into Google Earth accurately set out of the elevation. So we have a rough idea of what you can see from the street. But view one is kind of on the approach, the approach to the plant, and identified that's where the top of the tower is. So it's just above the tree tron-
So it's just above the tree tops of this area, depending how much you accurate Google Earth is with the trees. You can see that it's in the distance there. If you go to the next slide, view two, this is off Highway seventy four, is the road you see in front of you. Sanway Road. And then on a few different things to the left are some of the concrete plant towers. In the far distance, you can see our, the elevator, you know, just above the tree line to the right, there's more concrete plant towers. And even in the cell tower. So there's a few industrial area, quite a few tall things. Of course, if you're driving down Sanway Road and you're looking at these things, you're going to hit somebody. Yeah. Yeah. So, so that gives you a feel where it's, it's well into the distance.
Basically those, go back one place. Those concrete plant silos or towers are basically higher than what we're talking about now.
Those are existing.
Those are.
Higher, I mean, looking at this, they appear to be.
They're further.
They also, they're. They're, they're much closer. They're much closer. Yeah, if I go all the way back to, to, you know, we're in, we're in the furthest distance away. Those concrete plants are much closer. They're just beyond the tree line. So that's why they show up so much.
Yeah.
More there.
And that makes sense. That's what we're talking about.
It's all about perspective and elevation, correct. Then if I just go to the last view, that is back towards this where you're coming off Sanoya to cross railroad tracks. Again, you have the, the concrete plant towers are evident, cell towers are, and are the, the project we're talking about, you can't even see it. Because you're so far away in the elevation.
Okay, the warranty place on the left is.
It's terrible.
And I had some other. Is there anything else? There was another, I want to tell us in this file, maybe they didn't put it. I just had some plan views showing the setback of how I mentioned on project. Now, we would, with the setback based on our height, we were still within the industrial areas. We didn't cross the right of way of Sanway. So that's something to be reviewed later because for reference for this review.
I'd like to make just one note, just because it was shown on the map they provided. They did show a distance to residential areas in Peachtree City. I just want to make note that this application, the application of our ordinance would only actually pertain to residential properties or highways and people right of way that are within the town's limits. So not to say that when applications come before us, we're not allowed to have consideration for, you know, Peachtree City properties and work with applicants on that. But our, this height restriction would only apply in relation to properties in the town.
Generally true. Any similar. Just to go back to this, I created this image, you know, I actually took the picture out off of Google Earth. Model inserted my model was able to the scale of the existing buildings to get the correct height. So that, that will be, when you look at it, it's pretty true to what, what you see in the picture. It just shows the setback in relation to the residential areas. Got it laid on, don't you map you see in the bottom, the blue circle. It just shows for this tower, you don't, you don't cross out either the heavy or light industrial site. I mean, not that it applies to what you're approving tonight, it's just. They asked me. Thank you.
Yep.
That's, that's all we have at this point. I will make a quick comment on, just very briefly, I know we sort of decided that fun on the issue of environmental impact. I will just make the comment about, you know, in addition to what Philip mentioned about the application process of complying with the local government procedures. This project will also have to comply with EPA and E P D programs. And, and so the, the way these, the projects work is they will, it'll have multiple filters and air cleaners that are, that are installed that will create a sea of dust or anything that those things.
You said there were other structures in the town that were above the thirty five foot. You know, when, when. Is it, would this requirement then, would they be brought into compliance? Would they still be in compliance with the new requirement you were, would they still be out?
And what I could best tell, it would bring, it would bring a majority of those buildings into compliance with our. I wasn't able to get a, you know, I'd have to, I'd have to essentially get out of a measuring laser and, you know, very precisely. I was, I was really only able to do that based on general, you know, type measurements from just a visual perspective compared with my G I S program of measuring out distances. But it would bring, it would bring most of those structures, as far as I could tell, into conformity for this review. So it would reduce the number of non-conforming, you know, structures that we have in, in town. A few of them are located, in fact, most of them are kind of inside the quarry properties. And they're actually furthest removed from typically speaking residential or Highway seventy four. There are a couple of these similar silos. I don't have clear, good information on how those or when those structures were completed, but they.
At this point, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for those in favor of the request. Seeing that there is nobody asking to speak, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for those in favor and open the public hearing for those in opposition. There's nobody in opposition, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for those in opposition. We'll open it up for any further discussion with planning commission.
I guess I have just, as the staff recommends approval of text, and that's recommendations. Not approving staff recommendation, what would that?
So staff is recommending approval of the text amendment language, not in the original application, but what was before you. So that's staff's recommendation for approvals for that language, not the original language that's in there. And of course, y'all can recommend to, or y'all can recommend not approving as presented or recommend approving in the original language.
Yes.
You can, yes, yes, you can suggest conditions are changed in addition. And that, that recommendation. Do on, what now that this is a text amendment for five throughout. Maybe other sites that might be able to build all towers. It's going to be a different announce. I think the project is. Just as a, just from a visual perspective, this would apply to any areas that we have M one, M two and V T two. So any, any accessory, industrial accessory usage that are located in those demi-classed. Would be subject to this new one. That's Shamrock Industrial Park in the quarry. That is the quarry and the industrial park off Peggy Lane in the north end. And then that would also include the B T P zoning, that is the Microsoft data center, all that language on the very far more. Those, those are really the general areas of application where these types of provisions would be, or accessory industrial structure would be subject to these. It is for the accessory industrial use. It doesn't, you, exemption for primary buildings.
I think that's key.
And, uh, question motion for consideration of text amendment?
Make a motion to approve text amendment in section one thirteen through one two five. Yes.
Right. Further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? Consideration text amendment, one thirteen to one fifty five. Move on to the next agenda items, new business. Thank you. Have comments?
I'll only note that we do have, first of all, a town hall has been closed from, from, or pending, you know, weather. The bringing did close town hall. We will also at next week's council meeting have a presentation from T S W on the final draft of the favorable centers initiative, the streetscaping plan. I just want to kind of give y'all a heads up since we've been communicating on that. That final draft is showing that these presented account for sixty eight dollar interest. Considering, just from a planning perspective, what that means for us is we've completed this. We will move in one of two directions, either just towards starting to execute on that plan and create engineering plans to actually do the streetscaping projects. Forward, we'll also then pursue grant monies, which makes us eligible for fairly significant grant opportunities to start expanding the project. So that's, that's where we're at. And so show some in-depth information and some renderings and things like that. Some things that I think y'all have already seen, that was right early drafts of, but the, it will be final, final draft rendered. And as of council to approve. Yeah, yeah, well, it's the final presentation of that document, of the draft. And it's, so if council has any major comments that they want changed, if there are opportunity to do that, then the actual final document would be created, council will approve that. We'll do a presentation, y'all, if you can use that final document. Yeah, yeah, so that's a long, a long process and it does, it opens up this.
Any additional comments from the commission? Go ahead and request a motion for the.
Motion.
Second. That was enough.
Thank you, guys. Be safe.
Be sure.
Be safe. You too. So many weird roles.
Unfortunately, David Tiermuck. See y'all.
That's what?
Those are the nominations part, right? I just kind of.
No, thank you. Yeah.
It's very complicated and weird, so.